I call this the November 16th, 2021, meeting of the Board of Commissioners and Commissioners. Tonight's dedication will be given by Bruce McVay. Bruce is the minister at the First Presbyterian Church here in Fayetteville. And our pledge allegiance will be given by Neeland Taylor. Neeland's eight years old. He's a third grader at Highland Reel. He loves playing basketball and baseball. And he's the son of Princeton and Kentsey Taylor. If you would stand this time for any standing for a pledge.
Let us pray. Lord Almighty, you have indeed been bountiful. As we look back over the years, how gracious you have been, how tender your mercy, how warm and constant your love. As we approach Thanksgiving, create within us, oh God, that true gratitude that shall make this holiday one of rededication, when we will think not of how much we can eat, but of how thankful we ought to be. So may we, all of Lincoln County, act as recipients of God's richest mercy and bountiful blessing, as we share with others. May we, in gratitude, get on with the job of creating not only a county, but a nation and a dear world in which all people have the right to seek happiness. Help us to make that dream come true in our homes, day by day, in streets, in offices, in schools. Bless these members of government that we have elected to represent us. Help them to work to create a Lincoln County full of hope, peace, and love for all who live here. Grant that their business here tonight be conducted in a manner full of your justice and mercy. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the new republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for this decision. Thank you for this decision. At this time, I think we already have a vote.
Twenty-three present, one absent.
On our announcements, the only thing that I have, and this is something not for a decision tonight, but our May commission date, which was normally scheduled for May 17, request to move that to May 24. That does not fall on the week of Memorial Day. And it's to help Madam Clerk, one of her meetings that is important to her because she's a director and officer in that, and would ask that that be moved. So if Finance Director Trellman, the commission would take that under consideration, we'll do our finance budget for next year and our commission dates. I would entertain a motion for approval of the October commission meeting minutes.
Make motion to approve.
Commissioner Bradford makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hunter, second. Any questions or comments on those minutes? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Would entertain a motion acknowledging receipt of 14 monthly committee meeting minutes and seven quarterly committee minutes. Do I have a motion acknowledging acceptance and receipt of those? Commissioners Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Ravis seconding. Any questions on those? All in favor of acknowledging receipt, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Next item on your agenda was Friends of Patrick. Melvin Myrick said she did not need to speak this month. She may be with us in the December meeting. Our next item, consideration for approval of resolution to adopt the redistricting plan for Lincoln County, county attorney, it says.
Thank you, Mayor. Every 10 years, in conjunction with the U.S. Decennial Census, local governments are required to redistrict and reapportion their legislative bodies according to state law. And bear with me as I read the constitutional provision that allows that or requires that. Tennessee Constitution, Article 7, Section 1. The county legislative body shall be composed of representatives from district in the county as drawn by the county legislative body pursuant to statutes enacted by the General Assembly. Districts shall be apportioned at least every 10 years based upon the most recent federal census. The legislative bodies should not exceed 25 members, and no more than three representatives shall be elected from a district. One of our code sections establishes the minimum number of commissioners at nine. And then we have another code section that says, prior to January 1, 1982, at least every 10 years thereafter, county legislative bodies of different counties shall meet, and the majority of the members being present and concurring shall change the boundaries of districts or redistrict a county entirely if necessary to apportion the county legislative body, so that the member represents substantially equal populations. We have a deadline of January 1 of 2022 to do this. And this redistricting is broken down into eight steps. Bear with me as I go through these steps. The very first step was to elect a redistricting committee to draw maps, and we've done that. And then we had a number on our committee. Chairman was Ronald G., Vice Chairman was John Thorpe, Secretary Stephanie Britt. The committees met three times. Sheila Allen, our county administrative election, participated in the redistricting process along with Dan Long. He was the chairman of the election commission. And that was step number one. Step number two was to acquire and collect redistricting data. And the Census Bureau is our primary source of information. As you all remember, we were redistricting over the last year, and we finally got our information from the Census Bureau. The Comptroller's Office works with us on this. They provide census maps and population data for each county, broken down into census blocks, precincts, and districts. And this is all now done by computer. We have a geographic information system called the GIS, and we have digital maps to do this. And we use what they call the Tiger database. And I won't tell you, I can't even remember what Tiger stands for. It stands for something technical. We were lucky to have C Task representatives down to help us out, and they helped us immensely. Melissa Kelton and Gary Hayes were the persons that helped us out. The third step was to evaluate current districts with the 2020 population, determine what changes have any must be made. We decided to just keep our districts the same and the number of commissioners the same, so that made it a little bit easier. Our ideal population per district, of course, we have eight districts, our ideal population per district is right around 4,300 persons. We were called upon to examine the population in each commission, district, as was presently drawn, and then we had to get all the districts within 5% plus or minus. So we did this, and we had to move some things around. Didn't have to do a whole lot, but as you probably well know, most of the population's in the southern part of the county, so that's where most of the moving got taken care of. So all the districts as drawn on the maps that are in your package are within the 5% plus or minus variance. When there is a step number four, draw one more of your district plans. The districts are the same, so we didn't have to go through that step. Then we complete the final district plan to have equal population in each district and make all the districts compact and contiguous. So here we are, step number six, and that's where we are tonight. That's to adopt a final plan by resolution. There's a resolution in your package that I'll read to you in just a minute that does that. Step number seven, the election commission may have to do a little bit of adjustments. It's doubtful because they participate, but that's a step that can happen. And then number eight, once all that is done, we'll certify our final district and our precinct plans, and that will be the way it goes. So here's the resolution that will be called upon to adopt tonight. It's entitled, "Resolution to Adopt a Redistricting Plan for Lincoln County." It reads like this. Whereas Tennessee Code Ant octet, section 5-1-111, requires that, at least every 10 years, county legislative bodies shall meet and change the boundaries of county legislative districts or redistrict a county entirely if necessary to apportion the county legislative body, so that the member represents substantially equal populations. Whereas consistent with the provisions of Tennessee Code Ant octet, section 5-1-111, Lincoln County has prepared a redistricting plan, which provides for a county legislative body composed of 24 members and which contains eight districts as depicted on the official redistricting map of Lincoln County prepared pursuant to Tennessee Code Ant octet, section 5-1-10. Now therefore, be resolved by the county legislative body, meeting in regular public open session in Fayetteville, Tennessee, as on the 16th of November, 2021, that section one is hereby adopted a redistricting plan for Lincoln County, which provides for three commissioners in each of the eight districts for a total county legislative body of 24 members. The districts or members of the county legislative body are depicted on the official redistricting map for Lincoln County prepared pursuant to Tennessee Code Ant octet, section 5-1-10. A copy of the official redistricting map is attached as exhibit A to this resolution and is incorporated herein by reference. And as an aside, it's in your other computers, you can see the maps. Section two, all members of the county legislative body shall be elected at large within the district during the candidacy selection. The three candidates receiving the greatest number of votes in each district shall be elected. Section three, this plan shall take effect upon passage, public welfare requiring it, providing that vacancies shall be filled in accordance with Tennessee Code Ant octet, section 5-1-104. And of course, this will be adopted tonight, as you will. And I'll turn it over to the county mayor.
Okay. Any questions, Attorney Simms, before I ask for a motion for adoption? Do I have a motion for adoption of the plan?
So moved.
Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Young seconds. Before we vote, I'd just like to thank the committee, Commissioner Jeans, and Sheridan, and all those officers in Sheila Allen's office, Melissa Kelton from C Task. It was maybe a monumental effort, but it went smooth, and I think everyone's pleased with how it turned out. So I appreciate the job, Young. All those in favor of adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you. The next item, consideration for approval of resolution authorizing Lincoln County to join the state of Tennessee and other local governments relative to the opioid base agreement. And I wish it was as cut and dry as it was redistricting, reapportionment. This has been going on for about two years, and Attorney Simms and I, we've read a lot on this, and we've made some executive decisions, mainly of not doing anything and not joining any legal group that was going to be prosecuting these drug companies and the distributors. Bottom line, easiest way to explain this is, all of the counties in Tennessee are going to have to adopt this if it goes forward, basically. There is funds set up for funding those attorneys who have filed lawsuits, which are not a part of any of those. The monies are going to be paid out if this goes through over 18 years. The counties will receive approximately 35% of the monies that come divided equally among the 95 counties. Then there's another portion of it that's divided according to population, another part according to the number of opioid deaths that occurred in the county. And then there's a committee set up that will be setting up funding for help with opioid crisis far as treatment and prevention in each of the counties. If you've got questions, I'll try to answer them. That's about as simple as I can make it. I would entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for adoption. Do I have a second? Commissioner Oakley, seconding. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Next item, consideration for approval of resolution to provide for increased compensation for the members of the county legislative body.
The census comes into play again. The minimum salary for the county mayors, our county mayor, has increased due to the census. We bumped up a scale. So when the mayor's salary goes up, then the commissioner's salary goes up. This was all adopted back in May 21, 2013, where we all agree, or the county legislative body agreed, that the county commissioners will receive an annual salary of 5.45% of the county mayor's annual salary to be paid monthly. Now, this would not go into effect until after the next election, so it wouldn't go into effect until September of 2022. So it will not affect these commissions. It will only be affecting the next election cycle. So here's your resolution. It's entitled, "Resolution to Provide for Increase in Compensation of Members of the County Legislative Body." Whereas under Tennessee Code Ant octet, section 5-5-107, county legislative bodies are authorized to fix the compensation of their membership in attending sessions of the county legislative body and duly authorized committees thereof. Whereas under Tennessee Code Ant octet, section 5-5-107, further provides that any increase in compensation for members of county legislative bodies does not take effect until the beginning of the term following the next election of county commissioners. After the resolution, increasing the compensation is adopted by a resolution of the county legislative body. Whereas on May 21, 2013, the Lincoln County Legislative Body adopted a resolution in which the county commissioners received compensation of an annual salary of 5.45% of the county mayor's annual salary to be paid monthly. Whereas the salary of the county mayor has increased pursuant to Tennessee Code Ant octet, section 8-24-102, therefore causing an increase in the compensation to be paid county commissioners beginning the term following the next election of county commissioners. Now therefore, be resolved by the county legislative body, meeting in session in Fayetteville, Tennessee, on the 16th of November, 2021, that section one, county commissioners shall receive compensation of an annual salary of 5.45% of the county mayor's annual salary to be paid monthly, with such increase in compensation for members of the county legislative body to take effect at the beginning of the term following the next election of county commissioners. Section three, this resolution shall take effect upon its passage and approval, the public welfare requiring it, and that will be your resolution.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Make motion to approve.
Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hunter, seconds. Any questions on this item or discussion? Commissioner Duncan?
Mr. Chairman, what is the difference in pay? I think we're, the state pretty much making us do this to keep up, what, like, less than
I really don't know. Nikki, do you know how much it is?
I think it's $34.36.
A month.
Up until this point, year-to-date, $8.01 a month.
$8.01, somebody said, a month. No one will make this. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Mr. Duncan, votes no. Anybody else?
No.
Commissioner Duncan, votes no. Anybody else? Ayes, with two dissenting votes. All right, next item. Planning on something, Director, Mr. Nancy Harris.
So in your packets, you have a request for a zoning resolution amendment, CR 2021-3. We held a public hearing earlier this evening with no comments. This is to amend the language, which currently reads, this is in the A1s of the district, by the way. Currently reads, "Private residential garages, barns, sheds, stables, farm barns, and other structures and uses customarily incidental to permitted uses." Basically, what that means is you, the way it's written, you would have to have a principal structure on the property before you could have any accessory structure. The language is a little convoluted, so what we tried to do was make it easier to understand. If you have a true agricultural use, this is how it will read. Agricultural structures, such as barns, stables, and farm buildings, implement sheds and the like are considered principal structures within this district, whereas private residential garages and non-agricultural sheds are considered accessory uses and shall require a principal structure on site or before it's permitted. And basically, it's the same thing, but now it's just clarifying the language that if it is true agricultural land, if you wanted to have an implement shed or barn, it was a little cloudy before, so all we did was clean up the language.
Any questions on this item? And you said there was no comments in public hearing?
Correct.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas, seconding. Questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Ms. Nancy?
In your packet is a request to call for a public hearing. The very first one is file 2021-R7. This is the Terry Cooley property located at 3159 Huntsville Highway. And again, you have it, a staff report in your packets. This is to rezone it from its current district of A1 to C1 for the purpose of selling the property as a commercial property, hopefully for a future retail store.
Any objection? The next one's a call for a public hearing next month prior to the commission meeting. Any objections to having motions together for a call for public hearing? Seeing none, let's go ahead with our next one of public hearing.
The second one in your packet is file 2021-R8. This is a rezoning request by Ricardo Rodriguez. The property is located at 27 Blanch Circle in Taft, and it is to rezone the property from A2 suburban residential to A1 agriculture. And the reason for this is to replace an existing mobile home that is not permitted in the A2 southern district.
Any questions on this one? Do I have a motion, call for public hearing for both of those items?
So moved.
Commissioner Sprague makes a motion. Commissioner Hunter, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor of call for public hearing on those two items? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to amend the resolution regarding zoning file number 2021-R6, rezoning request for Richardson and Fayetteville Lincoln County Development Board from A1 agricultural forestry rule to I1 general industrial. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion for approval, seconded by Commissioner Hayes. Before we're now for discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hunter.
I'd like to ask the commission if Mr. Michael Nance could speak to the commission.
Request from Commissioner Hunter that Mr. Nance be able to speak. Any objections? Mr. Nance? You have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Probably last month, the public meeting, it was my concern about rezoning the property. When I got rid of the lead that night, I was very pleased that it was voted down. My wife asked me on the way home, you know, is this it? Is it done? Did we win? And I said, I don't know. We have now. But I don't know if it'll ever come back up again. That was on the 19th of October, the vote passed. Six days later, I got a letter saying that this was occurring tonight. So the vote of note lasted a good six days. I don't know what the commissioners will vote tonight, but personally, I feel it's not going to pass, it's going to be rezoned. The reason I say that is that because six days after the vote occurred, it come before again, and we're going to vote, you're going to vote for it again. On the 29th of October, when I got the letter, I turned around and emailed all 24 commissioners, was my opinion, asking for some information. I received emails from three commissioners back out of the 24, and one, Mr. Hunter, was the only one that gave me some information, told me I had some of my information incorrect, which I appreciated. But I didn't get any feedback at all from the commissioners on any of the questions I asked. So I went in, I've tried to find out the information I could, you know. I'm not a politician, I don't work in government, I don't know where all the resources are, but I looked at what I could. I was hoping the commissioners would provide me the information that I asked for. I will say that I emailed, my notes here, I emailed Ms. Middleton on the 2nd of November to ask a question. She was on vacation, but her assistant, Ms. Porter, called me and emailed me and provided me a lot of information I asked for, so I appreciate it, appreciate her for doing that. But I went in, again, if it passes tonight, and we, is there a way to go back and have another motion to try to get it turned down? If it's turned down tonight, we're going to do this again next month. But anyway, the one thing I did do, and I'll hold this up to a second, I went in on the October meeting, we were provided a map of all the properties surrounding it. It comes off the Tax Assessor's page, I go there quite frequently looking at properties. I took that map today and went to the Tax Assessor's page. The center of the property, in question to be rezoned. Everything blue around this property that touches the property or within 200 feet is residential. Everything in yellow is agriculture, and black is commercial. So you can see around this property, majority of it is residential, and if you go out farther, there's even more residential. So what you're doing is you're taking a piece of land, 130 acres, rezoned, it ended up industrial, bringing a factory in an area that's already crowded, and we've got a subdivision down the road that's going in right now. I don't know how many homes, but they're putting the land in right now, working it up. I've heard rumors that subdivision or apartments going in and down the street. So you're taking an area that's already crowded, adding an industrial zone, if we get anything. I will also say that I spent 21 years in the Army. I'm a resident of Tennessee, but I spent 21 years in the Army. I've lived in Tennessee, Kentucky, Colorado, Georgia, I've been overseas. I can tell you that I have seen firsthand decisions made on zoning, the effect it has on a county or an area. The town I grew up in was mainly industrial. That's what they focused on, get companies in there, get people in there and everything. The economy went down, a couple of the factories closed, and the town is a ghost town. It hasn't been for 15 years. They can't get people back into county anymore, or into town. And I don't want that to happen in this area. Do we need growth? Yes, absolutely. But in an area like this, where there's so much residential around it, I personally do not feel that this is the place for it. So that's what I have to say, and I hope that, especially the ones that voted last time, no. I hope voters have been changed, your minds have been changed, vote no if this is turned down. Thank you.
What was the other part of discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call of the board.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. I have a comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Doug Cunningham. I'm the chairman of the Industrial Oversight Committee and also the vice chairman of this commission. We've been searching for industrial property for the entire 10 years that I have served on the industrial oversight. We've been looking very hard for property the last- We've been looking very hard for property the last four years. We are critically short on properties that we can show prospective companies. We have one lot left at the Fayetteville Lincoln County site on Winchester Highway. That's a 30 acre site, we're developing that site now, this is the site of the old Posey home. We have a 26 acre site at Runway Center, it's our best lot. We have an eight acre site, also at Runway Center. And we have two small two acre lots that are at the entrance of Runway Center. Really, that was set up maybe for an engineering firm or, you know, something small like that, two acres is not going to be much. Kind of funny, we also started listing a site in the Bulletin Park behind Montloch College, and it was originally tagged by the state as unusable for industrial purposes. But the fact that we're even listing that Rocky Hill side tells you how desperate we are for sites to list. That's it. That's all the industrial property that we have. So much bad information out there in regards to this issue. We don't own 300 plus acres that we can use for industrial land, a complete falsehood. As I said, we have few sites to offer, and when you consider that it takes years to develop any kind of business park like this, we have a definite need for some land now. It took 15 years to develop the Fayetteville Lincoln County Park. It took five years to develop Runway Center, and we had to pedal to the metal on that thing. These things take a lot of time, and when you're trying to get state and federal grants, that takes a lot of time and patience. I wish we could have found some property years ago. We sure talked about this property a long time ago. 10 years when sewer engineer Dudley Fox and our sewer committee first looked at the maps for that end of the county, he pointed out this tract that we're talking about tonight. He said, wow, there's a fantastic property for some kind of development. As a part of this sewer project, we had to put pumping stations in because the elevation is lower at the state line and has to go uphill to Fayetteville. So we had to put in pumping stations, and you try to locate those stations in area with a high potential for development. Well, guess what? We ended up putting a pumping station on this property. About five or six years ago, we requested that the state of Tennessee Economic Development folks come in and evaluate potential sites that we have here in Lincoln County, including some in Kelso, and this property that we're pursuing was the number one site in the county, according to the state economic development team. This property wasn't for sale at that time, but the state suggested that if we ever get the chance, that we buy that. What makes this site so great? Companies that employ individuals and make products who are seeking land here, they want to be as close to Alabama's largest city as they can. They want to be close to the state line. This site is the closest site that we have to the Alabama line. It's relatively flat, you can use just about all of it, sits on a four lane highway, it has sewer, electric, water, internet capabilities, it's a large tract with about 130 acres. There are just a very small handful of properties in Lincoln County that fit that description, and this is the only one that's for sale. What's the market value for this property? I don't know. 10 years from now, people are going to be saying, boy, that was cheap. So what they did was Runway Center, when we bought Runway Center 10 years ago, 106 acres for $500,000, a lot of people, including the mayor, said that we had grossly overpaid for this property. It's corrupt. Doug's doing something to help such and such a bank or such and such a family. You know, it's, all that sound familiar? You know, that's the same stuff, you can look on Facebook and see that. But a 5,000 acre for prime commercial property, and that's what we paid for Runway Center, that looks like a pretty good deal. We made our money back on that Runway Center by selling two lots. Today, this day and time, hey, rocky old hill land out in the far north end of the county where I live is bringing $10,000 a night. There's no road front to that, it's a property, there's no road front, no internet, no sewer, and it's 11 miles to get a loaf of bread or a gallon of gas. Prices have gone sky high, and they're going to stay that way. People say it's going to damage the value of my property, this industrial park down here. But it sure hasn't hurt the value of home for Runway Center. People are wanting to move here so bad, they're buying houses and properties siteless and sane. And I deal with them, and the insurance pays us, I deal with them every day. It's just absolutely amazing to me that somebody would buy a house and never come and look at it. This is not going to hurt the value of those surrounding properties. These light industrial complexes are actually not bad neighbors. Someone has been saying that this park's going to have pollution, running out of big smoke stacks, and it's going to ruin our air and ruin our water, and, hey folks, we got laws against stuff like that. We're not putting in a steel mill here, you know, we're looking for companies that make automobile parts or healthcare product or something like that. Go look at Runway Center, go look at the Winchester Highway. You know, I would much rather, me personally, have a light industrial complex with three or four companies in it than to have 300 plus houses. The state has a lot stricter laws in regards to air quality and noise pollution for businesses than we do for a big subdivision. People are saying that we don't need any jobs. We've got enough, we don't need any. We've got plenty, heck, we've got all kinds of people from other towns that come here to work, why do we need any new jobs? Folks, that's just more misinformation. We do need more jobs. Helping companies create jobs is the number one responsibility for me, because these companies pay various taxes that help us keep our individual taxes low. You know, that's one of the big reasons that we want to get them, but we need the jobs too. The kids that are at school right now are going to need work, and we need to develop those jobs. We're in a constant battle to attract and keep jobs. As a young commissioner, I can remember we lost Eagle Snacks and Lee Jeans just like that, thousand jobs gone. You never know what's right around the corner for you, and I think we all should be, have a pretty good dose of that here the last couple of years. But like I say, we must constantly keep trying to attract new businesses. And I can appreciate the views of the folks down there who want this property to remain up pretty far. But the reality of the situation is, you know, it's going to sell, and it's going to be something else. You know, we, that's what we need as a county, sites for companies to locate. And in my opinion, this tract land will be much more beneficial to Lincoln County as a light industrial property as opposed to some subpoesies. And the state TDEC folks have been down here, you know, they think they can fix this bridge, they can get us a turning lane, that's going to help everybody down there. That's one of the big things that I continue to hear. You know, I feel like we just can't miss this opportunity. We put in zoning, we put in sewer, we set aside funding for economic development, all in anticipation of a day like today. That's what, this is what we've been working for. All these moves made in the last 10 years so we can give Lincoln County a better chance to grow. And I would ask this commission to vote to rezonate this property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I got a question. He said we have sewer, and we have water. But do we have adequate sewer and waters, water pressure to handle the industry that might come in?
No, no the answer.
The reason I'm asking, if Lincoln County Water Company Utility is going to have to spend $2 million to put water in there, $1 million, whatever it is, I mean, have we looked at, hopefully we dotted our i's across our t's and k's here. Respond to that, Mr. Chairman.
We have, we have no idea what prospective companies might come in here and what they might need. You know, that's, that's the thing that the state will help us with. If we have a company that says, you know, hey, I got to have more water than what you're able to do, we can, because we got water running by there, the state will say, hey, okay, we'll help you guys do that. If we need gas, natural gas, maybe it's something that concerns me really, you know, if somebody needs a lot of natural gas, you know, we would have to redo some stuff. But, you know, that's something that the state will help us with when we've got that, it's just like this, this road. You know, if we, if we go out there and we designate some property and we purchase that property and we're making the moves to try to, you know, get some growth going, they'll help us with stuff like that. But like I said, we have absolutely no idea what might come in. You know, it's certainly not going to be a steel mill or a slaughterhouse or anything like that, we've got a lot of roads, you know, it's light industrial. So we just kind of deal with that if we come along, and Elaine, I'm sure can tell you a lot of stories of things that we've had to do in the past where we've had to shuffle and get, get stuff in there, but we kind of deal with that, those kind of things as we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Elaine, you want to address the due diligence that's been done on the property?
I'm getting it.
Pardon me?
Yes, sir. You won't be there?
IDP's been in charge of the due diligence. The patient or our office, I guess, Elaine as executive director of IDP has been in charge of the due diligence, so right us up the speed where we are.
Yes, sir. We've done our investigation on this property, we've done a boundary survey, we've done a phase one environmental report on this property, we've done geotechnical testing on this property, we've done endangered species testing on this property, we've done a cultural resource on this property, we have done, there's one other report we're missing, the boundary of phase one, the geotechnical, we've done a wetland delineation on this property. So we've got all of these reports back, and there are no environmental issues with this property whatsoever. These are all the reports that are required by the state of Tennessee and TDEC to certify sites or to build property, I mean, buildings on these properties. We have all of these reports, and this is a viable site for us to build industrial buildings on. TDA has looked at this property, they've done a conceptual layout on this property. Just build, we don't know what size or how many buildings, but based on what we do know from this conceptual drawing, we can get roughly six industrial buildings on this piece of property. Now to say that's how it's going to develop, we don't know that for sure. It will strictly be based on the needs of the prospects that come to us. We don't have no idea who that will be or what that will be, but it will fit in the box of I1 zoning. It'll be light manufacturing, it'll be building similar to what we have at HeroTech Manufacturing. You all have taken time, if you don't look at it, you'll see that operation. I mean, they're a great outfit, it's a great addition to our community, they're just now ramping up production, and they currently to date employ 75 people. Out of those 75 people, 68 of those people work, that worked there on from Lincoln County. So our, our industries are employing workers from this community. We currently have over 7,000 that cross that state line every day, so we're trying to offset that, bring those jobs back here. You know, my point is here, I just ask that you all rezonate this property. We need land to sell this community. We can't do it without you, so.
Anything relating to Commissioner Ashley's water and sewer?
We have gotten, we have gotten water flushes from the water department, and if we have industries such as HeroTech, it does meet those requirements. Now, we're going to put a freedom layout there where they're washing hundreds of tons of potatoes, that won't work. We'll have to upgrade the system.
Yeah, I was hoping HeroTech, we had to make adjustments for them so that they would have their fire protection, whatever.
We put in a ten inch water line with state funding for that. The company put in a water pump to meet their, their requirements. They have building requirements they have to meet in their industry, so in order for them to meet their requirements, they did have to put in a pump. But we did with state funds, put in ten inch water line in a park. We've been very fortunate with Runway Center, we've gotten over $5 billion grant to develop that park, and it would be no different with Runways, I mean, with the new industrial park. We've gotten the state and federal funds to develop that. We would do the same thing with this one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Anybody in the public, would you like to be recognized? I need a commissioner to request you to have a, Commissioner, Commissioner Thorpe, if he will come with a microphone and state your name, and then we'll, you got five minutes. What was your name?
Matthew Hancock.
Matthew Hancock. Thank you.
Uh, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Matthew Hancock. I grew up on Hancock Road, right on the corner of the highway, so highway and Hancock Road, about a mile and a half to the state line. So I don't really have a lot to talk about, I just had a few questions that I wanted answered. So, um, talking about the sewer system, you know, I see a lot of this kind of stuff starting to happen in the county. You know, y'all keep talking about all these state grants and all this stuff in regards to all these things that are coming in, but I kind of am seeing a lot of this pushing back on the taxpayer. You know, y'all, y'all talk about this sewer and all these state grants and everything that we're getting for it, but the problem that I see is, is the residential homeowners on the highway are being forced to pay for that. We didn't ask for that. Nobody that lives on that highway wants that sewer, I mean, we have septic system, what's the problem? So why are we paying for it? I'm not paying for it, but my mother is, you know? And I see her going through that, and from what I understand, if she has any serious problems with her septic system, she's going to be forced to pay to get hooked up to that sewer system. What kind of crap is that? That doesn't really make any sense to me. So whenever I start hearing all of this stuff about all these great things that are going to happen, I, I just don't buy it. Y'all are not selling me on this, you're not selling a lot of us on this. And I just want this to be known to the richnesses, this has nothing to do with y'all. Y'all are more than welcome to sell your property to anybody you want to, y'all are great people, you have been awesome to our family, and we thank a lot of you, just know that. This has nothing to do with y'all, this has to do with the county? This has to do with these strong arm tactics that are coming in, and I don't buy anything that you're saying. I don't buy all this greatness about this industrial park, not one bit. There ain't nothing good coming out of that. I'm telling you that right now. I mean, y'all talk about this HeroTech, is that an American owned company? No, it's not, I'm pretty sure that's a Japanese owned company. So what, what good is that doing? I mean, that's what, I mean, I, and it's one business. Oh, we sold all these lots, man, y'all have created so many jobs. I mean, y'all are spending a lot of money on this.
$68,000.
Yeah, I mean, y'all are spending so much money on this, and man, I'm just not seeing like all this money that y'all have spent already, I'm not seeing any just real good return. I don't know anybody personally that's life has been just enhanced by any of this stuff that y'all did. What I see is a good old boy aristocracy that is going to be able to jump in here and a group of people this big, out of a group of people this big, all get to get their pockets lined somehow by developing all this property. And I'm going to tell y'all something, all y'all commissioners, all of you county officials, everybody, the people that are watching y'all the closest are our age, we're in our early to mid thirties, and we're going to be voting from now on. All the county stuff and all that, we don't really pay attention to it or haven't for a lot of years, but you know what? We're all homeowners now, some of us are business owners, and we're paying very, 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 very close attention. And this money that is being spent, I'm just not seeing, I'm just not seeing that it's going to really, really enhance anybody. And everybody that's not in District 4 that talks about how great it is, well, they're not building this stuff in your district, they're not building this stuff right down the road from your house, you know? It's, it's not, it's not going to hurt y'all nearly as much as it is people up there. So, you know, that's all I really have to say about that.
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, question been called for, and we'll now have a roll call vote. A yes vote will be to change the zoning to I1. A no vote will be leaving agricultural as it is. She called your name, yes or no?
Steve Brad.
Aye.
David Sanders.
Yes.
Danny Walker.
No.
Brady Revis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
John Thor.
Aye.
Jack Ashley.
No.
Kate Hewin.
Aye.
Mark Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Bradford.
No.
Charles Hunter.
No.
Steve Spray.
No.
Stephanie Britt.
Yes.
Shirley Dangerfield.
Yes.
Anthony Taylor.
Yes.
Doug Cunningham.
Aye.
Pat Hanes.
Yes.
Tori Young.
Yes.
Ricky Bryant.
Aye.
Glenn Douglas.
Yes.
Steve Guntherberg.
Aye.
Darren Holland.
No.
Ronald G.
Yes.
Donnie Ogle.
Yes.
I have 17 yes, 6 no.
6 no, 1 absent.
1 absent.
Vote was 17 yes, 6 no, 1 absent. The motion passes for changing the zoning to I-1. Next item, our library report.
Hello. On behalf of our library director, Megan Mer, who is a maternity leave, it is my pleasure to share with you the positive happenings of the library. For the month of October, we had 1,798 visitors. Attendance at our various programming events has been doing extremely well. The book club continues to be a popular group, recently celebrating their fourth year anniversary. For teens, we have the animated club and the Korean Jewels Culture Club is pleased to be returning to in-person meetings. Attendance at these events have continued to grow over the previous few months. We held a successful Halloween event for children in costume, come by for candy and a free book. This drew many delighted children and parents to the library. We also got in the spirit of Christmas as we decorated for the host of Christmas past. We held our annual Polar Express event, which is very popular with children of all ages, on November 13 with games and refreshments for all participants. We had over 300 participants for this event. In conclusion, the library staff is pleased to be able to serve the literary and cultural interests of the community and is looking forward to the Thanksgiving break, which we will be closed on November 25 and 26.
Thank you. Any questions? Can I share? Excellent job, and we thank all y'all for it. Thanks for like the doing really well. We appreciate it. Next item, budget committee report.
Budget Committee Meeting Report, November 16, 2021, Regular Session, Board of Commissioners. Budget Committee of the County Legislature Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, left the sun to view notice in the library at Lincoln Central Academy on November 2nd, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Members present were Ricky Bright, Kate Cunningham, Randy Bradford, Brady Revis. Members absent were Donnie Ogle, Steve Graham, and Sherri Dangerfield. Others present were Finance Director Vicki Trenton, Deputy Finance Director Tracy Kendall, Solid Waste Director Dana Gentry, County Attorney Dan Simms, County Commissioner Charles Hunter, Steve Spray, Mark Mitchell, David Sanders, Pat Haines, Steve Guntherberg, Lincoln County Extension Agent Dan Owen, Lincoln County Planning and Zoning Officer Vicki Kaplan, Leanne and Harold Dawkins, with leadership of Lincoln. Item 1, Lincoln County Extension Agent, Lincoln County Extension Agent Dan Owen presented a favorable amount that the county would be responsible for funding next fiscal year based on the hiring of the adult agent in his hiring agreement with previous agents. This amount was $8,052.25. This was an information item on this. Item 2, Personnel Committee Report. It was an information item. Mr. Bright reached the members of Personnel meeting held November 2nd, 2021, in which the committee approved as a deputy director who worked in the finance department, be classified as an hourly employee, and follow the guidelines set out in the Lincoln County Personnel Policy. Item 3, Finance Director Vicki Trenton presented the following items. A, 101 General Fund Amendment. Motion made by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, size 5, yes, 3 options, to approve of the 101 General Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Revis makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Mitchell makes a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Thorpe.
Item 3B, 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendments. At a motion by Commissioner Bright, seconded by Commissioner Hewin, in size 5, yes, 3 options, to approve the 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hollis makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Douglas seconded. Any questions? All in favor of approval of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Thorpe.
C, 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. With a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Revis, in size 5, yes, 3 options, to approve the 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Vicki Trenton.
Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Haines seconded that. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item, Commissioner Thorpe.
D, Health Department obsolete equipment to surplus. Ann Browning, Lincoln County Health Department Director, requests to surplus items of outdated equipment once she can confirm with the regional office that this equipment is not state-owned property.
Okay, and I've got an update on that. I spoke with her this afternoon. The state has confirmed it's not their property. So in order for our firm to go ahead and dispose of that, I need a motion for approval of disposal, please. Commissioner Hunter makes a motion to that effect. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Douglas seconds. All in favor of approval of disposal of this property, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Commissioner Thorpe.
E, Emergency Communication District Part-Time Employee Information Item. The city will be employing a part-time dispatcher for one shield. Lincoln County and the City of Fayetteville have an agreement to equally fund the emergency communication employees. L, Monthly Financial Reports Were Presented for Approval. At a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Hewin, in size 5, yes, 3 options, to approve of the monthly financial reports.
I have a motion showing the acceptance of those financials. Commissioner Revis makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Bradford makes second. Any questions on either financials? All in favor of approval, receiving those in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Thorpe.
Item 4, Mr. Cunningham discussed with the committee his opinions regarding the rezoning of the Richardsons property and the importance of this action upon the future of the industrial program. Item 5, there being no further business to be presented. At a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Revis, in size 5, yes, 3 options, to adjourn the meeting, especially submitted to the November 23, 2021 Regular Session of the County Legislature Body, Steve Graham Chairman, Vicki Bryant Vice Chairman, Donnie Ogle Secretary, Vicki Trenton Reporting Secretary, Shaw Health Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorpe. Next item, note republics. Matt Parker.
Kathy Darlene Kears by Commissioner Ogle, Savannah Salebee by Commissioner Thorpe, Kevin Keel by Commissioner Young, Monica Williams and Janice H. Posey by Commissioner Bright, Cheryl Williams by Commissioner Jack Ashley, Mary Elizabeth Sims by Commissioner Cunningham, Lisa S. Preisson by Commissioner Revis.
Any additions? Do I have a motion for approval of that list? Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Bright. Any questions or comments on the list of notices? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item, board now for new business. Any new business needs to come before the commission on this? Let's meet.
We adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Bright, seconded by Commissioner Guntherberg. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.